I don't think I've met you.
No, I don't think we have met. I'm Matt.
Can you hear me?
All right, thanks, Pat.
I can hear you.
Can you see my screen?
What happens if I do this? No, that just makes that bigger.
Is that my share screen is paused, but I don't know.
Oh, wait, maybe that is your screen. The join a team with code. Is that your screen?
Yeah, this is my.
Yeah, there's your screen then. Okay, I thought that was on my screen. Yeah, okay, so I can see your screen.
And I've driven around a lot of that while I live there.
That's pretty amazing because that's Houston, my understanding it's expanded as much as any community.
Well, it's actually the biggest land area city in the world.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess I would speak to that.
Certainly not the biggest population, but it's.
So I can hear all of you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Great.
Yeah, um, maybe something to drink. Sure. Yeah, and I get the alcohol fridge in here, but I don't think that'll go over well.
Yeah, he just, that's what he said, he didn't think it'd go over well. Pretty warm up drink then, didn't they?
Don't get carried away. This is being recorded.
That's why I have a soda, see?
Good, good, uh.
Choice.
Yes.
Really get, did they get the 15 minute rolling?
Okay, I see that's you at the top there. I was trying to figure out who that was.
This?
Yes. All right. It started. Welcome everybody to the November 17th, 2020 zoning board appeals meeting. We have two applications that we're going to review and then we have our meeting minutes from the October to over as well. At this time, I like to open the meeting to what we call the open forum for any participant who has a question regarding zoning board and its function of items that are not on the particular time. So at this point again, I'm going to open form and we'll give a clue, allow folks to chime in, chime in if they feel they want to do that.
You guys hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I'm Larry Pullen. I can't I can see just one person right now. I'm not too familiar with going to Zoom meetings.
Okay, well, we can hear you, which is the important thing. Are there any other participants?
We have everybody.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to close the public forum. Given that we didn't seem to have any interest in that particular time and with our first application. Larry, you, if you want to just give us an idea of what you're looking to do and
Okay, well, I want to, I want to build a garage for my home. And where I want to put it, I talked to my builder about it. It's going to be a pretty big garage. It's going to be kind of a large garage. And I talked to my builder about it, where it would look the nicest and where it would look the best from the road. Has a problem with the, I believe I got to be 40 feet away from the, my side borders. And it's going to be, it's going to be closer to 18 feet. But there is nothing really next to me. There's a big lot that's been for sale for a while. And then next to that lot, there's a, there's a home. So I thought that I could try to get a variance and be able to put my garage where I would like to.
Okay. So as indicated in the variance application, where you would be 40 feet, you're going to end up only being 21 feet from the side yard property line?
Yeah, is that what the application is? It's got to be, it has to be 21 feet?
Well, it has to be 40 feet, but where you're setting the garage, it's going to be 21 feet. So looking for 19 foot.
I'm sorry, you are cutting out with me. I could not hear what you said there.
You're going to be looking for a 19 foot variance.
Yes.
Right, the difference between the 21 and the 40.
Okay, yes.
Okay. The only question I had, you made reference to solid tanks. What kind of tanks are we talking about?
Solid tanks?
Yeah, on your, some of the dimensions, you have garage to solid tank.
Garage to let me, let me see what I have here.
Well, there's a solid and a liquid.
Oh, the solid tank. Okay, I see what you're saying. Liquid tank, the solid tank is the actual, that's the tank, my septic tank, which has the solids in it. That's what I called it.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I have a liquid tank, which is a little bit further away. I didn't know what to call that, so I call it the solid tank.
Right, but it's septic, actually, yes, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
And the liquid, the liquid tank is part of the septic system.
Also part of the septic, yes.
And it looks to be they're going to be well behind where this garage is to be placed.
Yeah, they're way behind it.
Okay.
They're quite a ways behind it, yes.
And then you have a well in the front of the property?
Yes, it's quite a ways away. I think I, I I think I did the measurements for that as well.
Yeah, you did, yeah. Well, garage 93 approximately.
Yeah.
Jonathan or Dan, are you guys following this?
Oh, sorry. All right, how about now?
Yes.
What I'm not seeing is how far from the road the garage is going to be.
Oh, um. That was my question also, sorry.
I didn't think I had to do that, but it's quite a distance from the road. It's at least 150 feet. I'd have to go out and check it for sure, but it's, it's got to be at least that. Because it's right near the house and I, the house is quite a, quite a ways from the road.
All right, that's just, that, that's what was missing from the map is I couldn't really tell where, where the garage was.
Well, you can, with the map that I made, you can see how close it is to my house.
Right.
I've got like about 25 feet from the front of my house. In the front of the house, at least, I haven't measured it in a while, but it's got to be around 175 feet from the road. Quite a ways from the road.
Yeah.
Long driveway.
If the well to the property line is 126 and then the house is well behind the well itself.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, what we're just looking for is the side yard variance. This will be a guide. Again, you need 40 and it's going to be 21 feet, so we're looking for a 19 foot variance, 19, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
John and Jonathan, did you guys follow that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, that property on the other side, is that just a big field?
Right now, it's just a big field, yes. I think, yeah, I think it's just a big field. I haven't looked over there, but it's, I think it belongs to the person. I don't remember their name, next door. There's a house there. I think they own both those properties. But right now, it's just a big field, yes.
Any other questions? John or Dan, any questions, additional questions?
No, I'm, none for me.
No, none for me either.
All right, I guess then I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that the, this particular action is a type two action pursuant to Title VI NYCRR section 671C 12 or 13. And that no other, it's an extent type two action and that no other action need to be pursued.
Um, I will second that with the addendum that we declare ourselves lead agency while we're at it.
Uh, that's a good idea. Yes, thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, so the only other thing that we would need is somebody, if they would be so kind to make a motion that we
Right, I will move that we set a public hearing for a 19 foot side yard variance for Larry Pullen 625 Oak Hill Road, SBL 74.00-1-30 on December 15th, 7:00 PM?
Yes. Thank you.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
All right, so Larry, you're all set. Next month, we'll basically have a public hearing for anybody who might have any input regarding this application. And then we'll review and then decide on it at that point.
Uh, so I should come to that hearing as well?
Yeah, you should be, you or a representative of yours should be present, yes.
That's on December 15th?
That is correct.
At 7:00 PM?
Yeah.
Okay, same link?
Yes.
Okay. I will be there.
Wonderful.
Okay, so that's it for me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sergey is on, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You want to kind of give us a heads up is what we need to work with you on?
Yes, I have a property located at 5442 Route 30 in Esperance, New York with a total area of 54.34 acres with a house sitting on it. Route 30 divides the property into two parts. Therefore, I'd like to ask for the permission to subdivide, basically subdivide the part with the house with the total acreage of 2.01 acres from the rest of the property. Basically along Route 30.
Okay.
Total frontage is 542 feet. Well, I'm missing just some acreage.
Right.
To 101 instead of, there's I guess like 2.3 required.
Right. Right, because the lot can be no smaller than basically 100,000 square feet. Which is, which is about 2.3 acres. And I guess you had it surveyed and then it was determined that it was 2.01 acres?
Yes.
Okay, which that just gives you 87,555 square feet. So you would need a variance of the difference required 100,000 square feet and the 87,555. So if I round it off, then you'd be looking for an area variance of 12,445 square feet.
That is correct. Yes, I'd like to get a variance.
Okay. Now, this is something you had brought to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the reason I'm dividing because Route 30 just goes through and I'm just a natural, we'd like to subdivide this, like the property, the area with the house. It's been.
That makes sense. I mean, it's it just, again, that parcel size is just a tad smaller than what is required, so.
Yes, I understand this.
Dan or Jonathan, do you have any comments? I mean, is this pretty straightforward from what you're seeing?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
We know the percentage of the square foot variance relative to the amount needed. We know the percentage of the, the square foot variance relative to the amount needed?
Uh, yeah, actually, well, yeah, let me give you that.
Oh.
Looks like 1,000 divided by 100,000.
Yeah, it looks like it's about an eighth.
Yes, yeah, about 12%.
Okay.
Did, did the planning board take any action, or did they just kick it over to us?
They, apparently they deferred it to Dale, and he, he obviously, you know. All right, so unless we have any other, uh, concerns to be raised, if somebody wanted to make a motion as far as lead agent and the, uh,
Yeah, I, I will move to declare ourselves lead agent. Hi.
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 Hi. And then I will move that we declared as a type two action requiring no further, uh, action to satisfy the requirements of seeker. I know Nelson, you have the whole written.
No, let me, let me read the, uh,
Yeah.
deal, so we get, uh, the request for the area variance is an exempt type two action pursuant to Title VI, NYCRR Section 671.5C12 or 13, and no further action pursuant to seeker is required.
Second.
We need your affirmation, John.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear, uh, hi.
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 Dan.
All right. All right, so then the next thing, uh, we would need somebody to make a motion to set a public hearing for this matter for December 15th.
Um, I don't know the section offhand, but I will move that we set a public hearing on the, for the subdivision of a lot of, Sir D, 10,750 Rickard Hill Road, uh, SBL 52.00-1-20.1 for an area variance uh, on December 15th at 7:00 PM, or shortly thereafter, as it can be heard.
Second. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
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 So, Sergey, you're all set, uh, in December, we'll have a subsequent meeting with the public hearing regarding this matter, and we'll uh, make a determination at that time.
Okay.
All right, I, I mean, you're probably accessing Zoom as you are now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So the next thing we would, uh, wanna review of the meeting minutes from, uh, October. They've noted that.
Is, is there a kid in here?
What's that?
I have a third packet here for Joy Black?
No, oh. Yeah, actually, she, uh, wasn't gonna make it tonight.
Oh, okay.
No, we just had the two applications, so. Yeah, before we get, I don't know if you have heard that, uh, Pat Nace has, uh, gotta resign.
Oh.
He just, he indicated he wasn't gonna be at the meeting as a participant, but he stopped by and just indicated that, uh, he's gotta resign the, uh, board and, uh, again, he's been doing this, well, easily for as long as I've been on the zone, so.
Well, that's unhappy news.
Uh, yeah, I, I think, you know, he's certainly, uh, done more than his share as far as participation with the, uh, zoning board, so. I mean, I guess we could look to see if maybe we could, come up with something that recognizes his, uh, participation, so we'll kinda keep that in mind and then, but, you know, we could do that. I mean, in the past, the zoning board, uh, used to independently of the planning board, you know, have their own, like, kinda dinners or informal gathering, and then we were doing this jointly, uh, like, up at the tree farm, I don't know anybody was that, uh, but of course, you know, the circumstances as they are now, that's kind of a precluded as, uh, that happening for at least the near future. Um, so how you guys been making out with your trainings?
Um, so I'm starting.
Uh, I watched four and a half hours of, uh, YouTube videos from the Department of State, plus the two sexual harassment videos, which are exactly the same as the ones I have to take for work, right down to the same case studies.
Yes, yeah. Well, and like I say, it's, you know, as far as, some of them don't have any, you know, like, course completion documentation.
All right.
And, you know, just kinda write a little blurb of what you were, you know, viewing, uh, and then we'll just take it.
Well, I think Melissa said she was gonna send me some sort of affirmation, or come up with an affirmation, that I could swear what I completed.
Yeah.
If you want, I can, I can email you the courses and the dates I took them.
Yeah, I mean, that's as much affirmation as we're doing with the sexual harassment training. Again, we're, it's someone on the audit system, you know, it just, uh, and again, I, I, I'm finding, like, the webinars on the YouTube, you know, would be the same as, the same kind of presentation that we would have had on our October training, so.
Yeah, very much so.
Yeah. And I guess the thought is that they should be completed at least by the end of next week? Okay. Yeah.
Next week or the end of the year?
No, end of next week, because I, again, I suggested originally, but I guess Teresa wants to make sure that, again, next week being Thanksgiving, uh, I mean, I'm only not an athlete through my own, so.
Yeah, no, as I said, I've done all mine, I was just getting the date down.
Yeah, but again, just put down what you saw and, you know,
Yes.
commit that, and then, uh, that should, uh, work, ready?
Will do.
Okay. Um, other than that, the meeting minutes from October? Again, the only thing I saw was the, uh, uh, the reference to seeker, which should be SEQR, State Environmental Quality Review. I mean, it's, it's not a big thing, but it's for the sake of being consistent with the, uh, how the state, uh, identifies it.
Yeah, it's one of the few times you have a silent A. Because it's not a real word.
Oh.
Yeah, it's an acronym.
Yeah, but, yeah, well, that, it, because that would be the state environmental quality review.
Review, yeah.
So, but usually the seeker is, again, how I, uh, come to identify, but again, it's not all that significant, but again, it, it is something that we could just make note of it. Unless somebody's seen anything else, then if somebody could make a motion regarding the, uh, review and acceptance of the meeting minutes?
I, I will move that we accept the minutes of the October 20th, uh, meeting with the one small change that Nelson has, uh, has amended.
I'll second.
Hi.
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 Man.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi. Um, now, is everybody, uh, does everybody now have a town email account?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yes and no. I'm working through that. I have to use a different browser or a different computer, because I have another Outlook account. And it doesn't matter what login you use, it, it will take me to my other Outlook account, so. Um, I can get to it, it just have to jump through some hoops.
Okay.
So, that's why I've been using um, my regular email, until I have that really ironed out.
Okay, well. Yeah. So.
Yeah, it's weird, it's, it's like if I, if I have, because I have an Outlook account for the state, and it doesn't matter if I log in using my town ID, it still takes me to my state account.
Well, let me ask you this, do you have an actual email program that you use?
I'm not sure what you mean.
All right, I, because it, it sounds like, uh, if you're accessing your Outlook account as a webmail, as opposed if you have, um, I mean, I actually have the Outlook email program.
Downloaded?
It, yes, and what you can do is you can add, you know, that, the town email account, as well as any other Outlook account that you have, and it, they would just be, you know, um, kinda differentiated within the email program.
Okay.
Because.
That, that, that would be the simpler way than jumping back and forth between browsers and computers.
Right, exactly. Um, you can always access it via the, as a webmail, but it's problematic. So if you make that happen, that should alleviate that.
Okay, I'll try that, Nelson.
Okay, good. Other than that, any other comments, concerns? Again, at this point, without Pat, it's just gonna be us. Uh, and Diane's still with us, but she had a conflict with a, uh, school board. And then, once we determined that we had enough for a forum, uh, we were allowing her to, uh, attend the school board, which I imagine are pretty important these days, given, you know, what's going on with the schools, so. But other than that. I bet, yes, if we have no other comments and. Yeah, whose, whose dog is, uh?
Oh, that would be our, that would be mine. We, we, we picked up a puppy the end of June.
That's right, I remember you mentioned that.
Yeah, well, he's discovered lately he can bark, and so for about an hour a night, we, we get to listen to it.
Yes, I, I feel ya. We had, we got a, a slightly older dog, and she's the same, their hearing is phenomenal, because, you know, even when it's dark out, somehow they sense something's going on and wanna make you aware of it, so.
Well, we're right on Route 20, there's always something driving by.
Yeah. Um, all right, I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, we adjourn.
Nelson.
Hi.
Hi.
Man.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Hi.
John, before you go, do you get Netflix?
Um, I have the CD account.
Okay, yeah, there's.
Or DVD rather than.
Yeah, you play chess, correct?
Well, yeah, I, I've heard about the, uh, the, the series you're about to mention, I, I'm familiar with it, even amongst the chess community, it has good reviews. I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, it's called The Queen's Gambit, and I only became aware of it because there was a review in the New York Times as to how accurately the portrayal of, like, the original chess tournaments were.
Yeah. And I just. Fortunately, by the time I started playing, the tournament venues had improved a bit.
Yes.
And I started playing in the mid 80s, and they had moved beyond the, um, the conditions that they played in, but I know some older players told me about the conditions from the 70s and before.
Yeah, I've, uh, I watched the first, maybe two episodes of that, and it's pretty good.
Yeah, is it even amongst my, the, the tournament chess playing community, it has a good reputation?
I think we lost Nelson.
Oh, yeah, we may have lost the.
Yeah.
Well, Dan, it's just us.
Oh, shoot, oh, he can hear ya.
Yeah, anyway.
Oh, there they are, they're back.
Yeah.
Well, if we're done.
Yeah, sounds that way, I'll, pardon here.
And we, we, we're running online bridge tournaments, one of which is going on now, so I should check in on it.
That's interesting.
Yeah. If any of you play bridge, contact me.
I've never played bridge, you know, I'm, I might, you know, wouldn't mind learning, but, no, don't know.
In, in other times, we give lessons, but, uh.
Not now, right?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm gonna sign out.
I'm gonna go.
Yeah. Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.